I'd like to start with some council announcements. I wanted to formally tell you guys who the winners are of our Volunteer and Citizen Awards this year. We will be having the big Volunteer Supper on April 11th, which is in my report. But the Volunteer of the Year this year is Tyler Karst. I don't know if anyone here knows him. I know I don't. Group of the Year is Route 11 Cultural Center. Youth of the Year is Janelle Johnson and Karenjeet Bolo. So I was kind of hoping that Karenjeet would be here so that we could give him a good round of applause, but he's not here. And our Citizen of the Year is Peter Ginther. And I'm sure many of you have met Peter at the Senior Suppers. I contacted him to let him know, and he's just thrilled and just so humble. So, and like I said, the Volunteer Appreciation Evening is on April 11th, and we'll talk further about what that looks like and what's going to happen that evening. Another announcement is, as you know, longtime employee Phyllis Ann's retires this week. Wednesday will be her last day, and her farewell is on Thursday evening. So 26 years working with the city of Warham, a long time. And at the end of the week, Saturday, we have a birthday. Kendall Schramm, Councilor Schramm, will be celebrating his birthday, and I think he's traveling on his birthday. Is that right?
I am. I will be in Cuba.
So, good place to celebrate it. So happy birthday, Kendall.
Thank you.
So with that, does anyone else have any announcements? Okay, we'll move on to our agenda. Approval of our agenda, motion please.
I'd like, I'd like to move that council approve the agenda for March 25th, 2019, regular meeting of council.
Okay, Council Phil Chuck, seconder. Councilor Peterson, any comments? Okay, all in favor? Moving down to approval of the minutes, motion please.
I'd like to move that council approves the regular meeting of council minutes for March 11th, 2019.
Okay, Council Peterson, seconder. Council Beck, is there any comments, errors, omissions? Okay, all in favor? Moving down to administration reports, starting with our finance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for you tonight is a proposed utility, uh, utility increase. As you are aware, SASS Water has advised the city of Warham that we will be subject to a 9.75% water rate increase effective May 1st of 2019. In the fall of 2014, administration prepared a utility rate increase plan prioritizing creating a self-sufficient utility department. The goal of the plan was to get the city of Warham's utility operation into a sustainable position by 2017, allowing our utility reserves to grow to a suitable level for future infrastructure replacement and maintenance. As can be seen in Appendix A, this plan was attained, and by 2017, the utility department saw a net income of just over $216,000, which was then transferred to the utility reserve for future replacement of current assets. As a result of significant capital asset additions in 2018 and the associated amortization increase, 2018 sees an insignificant net revenue amount of just around $2,500, with net cash flow consistent with 2017 after adjusting for that amortization. Considering the 2019 SASS Water increase, the city of Warham could respond with option number one, no city of Warham utility rate increase. This would mean that we would see the 9.75% increase in our operating expenses, but not the subsequent revenue. This would result in a utility operational deficit of just under $465,000. Option number two, we could increase the city of Warham utility rate by 9.75%, passing the SASS Water increase on to the user. Considering the increased amortization costs due to the significant 2018 capital additions, and we are making an assumption that the 2.7 million budgeted asset addition of the Phase 2 Lagoon Aeration Secondary Cell will not transfer to an asset in use in the 2019 fiscal year, this would leave the department with a very small expected net profit of $14,000. Administration's recommendation would be to proceed with option two. While this option does not sufficiently support transfers to reserves for current infrastructure replacement, it does prevent the city from moving back into the realm of utility department deficits. The recommendation would also include continuing discussions with SASS Water and the city of Saskatoon regarding water rates, and ensuring council is apprised of potential city of Warham utility rate options and the subsequent department position. Administration's recommended water increase of 9.75 is detailed below. The current water rate is $23.54 per 1,000 gallons, and the recommended new water rate is $25.84 per 1,000 gallons. The revised water rate will result in our minimum water charge increasing from $41.20 to $45.22.
Okay, so we have a recommendation in front of us, and who moves that?
I'll move that bylaw 2019 dash 04, a bylaw to regulate water and utility rates, increasing the water rate from $23.54 per 1,000 gallons to $25.84 per 1,000 gallons, and the minimum charge from $41.20 to $45.22 be read for the first time.
Okay, Council Jones has made that first, first reading bylaw. I'll vote second for that. Council Beck, is there any comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, next item.
The next item I have is a proposed reserve transfer. It's pretty detailed, so I'll just reference the above document here. Based on the 2018 approved budget, administration was recommending the following reserve transfers be effective December 31st, 2018.
Okay, we have all the, all the points there, so do we have a motion, recommendation?
Yes.
Council Beck?
Yeah, with this here, I'd like to move that the council approves the transfers to and from reserves at this regular meeting of council as presented, effective December 31st, 2018.
Okay, and a seconder? Council Tully, is there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, next item.
The next item I have is a five-year capital plan. Administration has prepared a five-year capital plan, complete with planned funding, in Appendix C. This plan has been completed and updated through discussions with the various department managers. It is important to note, as was mentioned before, that this plan, that this five-year capital plan is not binding, but rather a projection of possible future needs. Administration, with presentation of the capital budget for the subsequent year each fall, will continue to present a prioritized capital budget in conjunction with the operating budget for council's approval.
So we have a recommendation in front of us?
I'll move that council adopts the 2019 to 2023 five-year capital plan as presented at this regular meeting of council.
Okay, Council Jones moves, seconder. Council Phil Chuck, any questions? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Aaron.
Mayor Spence, members of council, two items for discussion tonight. The first is the Warham Farmers Market request. Over the last five years, the Warham Farmers Market has utilized the parking lot at City Hall Thursday afternoons and evenings for their market. Over the last couple of years, the area has become more congested. However, the location has been ideal in terms of visibility and pedestrian traffic. A formal request from Farmers Market has been received. Other options have been explored, including the Legend Center, the property on the corner of Central and Centennial, and the Legend Spa's in the north. All presented their own issues, and the preferred location among the Farmers Market group has been the City Hall parking lot.
Okay, so we have a recommendation in front of us. Motion please, Council Schramm.
I've moved that council approve the Farmers Market location at City Hall parking lot for the 2019 season.
Okay, a seconder? Council Jones, is there any questions?
I'd just like to know how the discussion's going. Like, are they, they're obviously happy with that location, but are they looking into other places for other years? Where's the discussion going with that?
Yeah, we have informed them that there are some concerns, or building concerns, I guess, in terms of some of the congestion issues, and that, you know, as the Farmers Market continues to grow, that they may have to look at other options. They have informed us that they are looking at some options on Centennial Boulevard, but due to the number of vendors they feel that they'll have this year, that still that preferred location would be the parking lot at least for one more year.
Any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, with this here, I was just wondering, did we advise them of the possible construction, you know, let's say across the, the street here?
I have chatted with the main contact on the phone. We haven't had a chance to set up the meeting yet, but we did discuss that there will be some ongoing construction across the street, and that from time to time, there may be some traffic disruptions in terms of access. They felt like it wouldn't be a hindrance for kind of the short period of time that it may affect them. And again, they have that New Awakening Church as a bit of an overflow spot for extra parking if necessary.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, fast, next item.
The second item for discussion tonight is some discretionary uses for 1211 Bouchard Avenue. Council reviewed plans to amend the zoning bylaw for 1211 Bouchard Avenue. After some debate, it was determined the preference would be to bring the uses forward as discretionary rather than rezone the district to permit it. Council later reviewed the uses for discretionary approval up in March committee of the whole meeting. Administration has received a list of businesses looking to locate at this property. Atlas Outdoor Camping, Biking and Outdoor Sporting Equipment, Sales and Services, Pretty Little Pieces Retail Clothing, Liberty Tax Services Tax Preparation, Ocean Snow Foods Fresh and Frozen Fish Sales, God of Health Store Retail Health Food Supplement Sales, and Bin Furniture, our retail furniture sales. All of the above uses would be considered retail under the city of Warham zoning bylaw, with the exception of Liberty Tax Services, which would be considered office. Both retail and office uses are considered discretionary uses in the city of Warham zoning bylaw. Both, all uses have been advertised in the local paper for one week. No comments or concerns were received from the public. A copy of the circulation letter is attached, as well as a copy of the ad that was placed in the paper.
Okay, so below we have a number of recommendations. We'll start with the first.
I'd like to move, Your Worship, that council approve the discretionary use for a retail store for unit 11 at 1211 Bouchard Avenue.
Okay, um, seconder? I'm sorry, all these hands want, Council Phil Chuck, is there any questions, comments?
I'm not sure in relation to just this particular unit, but I do see just with the site plan up there, there's one that's a potential chiropractic clinic. And I know that one's not necessarily going to be before us this evening, but when it does come before us, is that going to be considered retail use? Is it going to consider office use?
Actually, I have, since our council report's gone out, have actually sat down with the potential owner of that business, and they are actually going to be locating, or looking to locate in another office building along Sixth Avenue. It's actually zoned the same as this site is zoned, so there will be, there will be some council involvement in it, and we were planning on bringing some information related to that to the next council meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Okay, second recommendation?
I move that council approves the discretionary use for a retail store for unit 10, 1211 Bouchard Avenue.
Okay, that moved by Council Tully, seconder. Council Schramm, any questions? Okay, all in favor? Third recommendation. Council Phil Chuck?
I'd like to move that council approve the discretionary use for a retail store for unit 9, 1211 Bouchard Avenue.
Now, do we have a seconder for that? Council Peterson, is there any questions there? All in favor? Next recommendation?
Your Worship, I would like to make a motion that council approve the discretionary use for an office for unit 8 at 1211 Bouchard Avenue.
Okay, moved by Council Schramm, seconder. Council Jones, any discussion there? Okay, all in favor? Next recommendation? Council Peterson?
I'd move that council approves the discretionary use for a retail store for unit 7, 1211 Bouchard Avenue.
And do we have a seconder? Council Beck, is there any questions? Okay, all in favor? Next recommendation?
I move that council approves the discretionary use for a retail store for unit 4, 1211 Bouchard Avenue.
Moved by Council Tully, seconded by Council Schramm, is there any questions there? Okay, all in favor? Good, thank you. Okay, Public Works.
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello.
Attached is a draft copy of the city of Warham's permit to operate a sewage works, which is due for renewal by March 31st, 2019. The current permit to operate sewage works will expire on March 31st, 2019. You will also find attached new sewage works emergency response plan as per Section 212 of the draft copy. Our EPO Lee Reinhardt has asked that the operators, mayor, mayor and council to carefully review the draft and sign a copy of page three of the noticement.
Okay, thank you. We have a recommendation in front of us. Who's going to move that?
I'd like to move this.
Council Beck?
Yeah, so I'd like to move that mayor and council approve the draft permit acceptable, and as such, we'll have no further comments throughout the 30-day review period as allowed under Section 28, subsection 3 of the Environmental Management and Protection Act 2010.
Do we have a seconder? Council Peterson, is there any discussion? Aaron, all in favor? Good, thank you, Jason. Okay, so we need, oh, our executive assistant in communication, Aaron?
Good evening. You have my report. For informational purposes, I do have two things to add. The open house has been confirmed, the time change, so it'll start at 3:00 rather than 4:00, like I had announced earlier. And in terms of social media, I'm working on, um, tracking the analytics so that we can have a better idea about what's effective, um, engagement rates and stuff like that.
Anything else? Okay, any questions of Aaron?
Just, uh, question three to seven, then, is the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Aaron. Okay, can I have a motion to file correspondence, or I mean, administration reports? Council Phil Chuck?
I'd like to move that administration reports for the March 25th, 2019 be accepted as presented.
Okay, and a seconder to that? Council Beck, is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down to council reports, starting with mine, if I can get a motion for my report. Council Beck, and a seconder, Council Jones. In my report, most of it is for information, but we do have some resolutions. We'll start with the first resolution, and...
Mayor Spence, I'll, that, I'll move that the council approve, Mayor Spence to attend Saskatoon Freeway Functional Planning Study, which is the SFPS project meetings going forward.
And a seconder? Council Peterson, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that our letter writing campaign was successful, so it's, I'm, I'm not certain if exactly what that's going to look like, but Brad and I are both attending the next meeting next, next week, so we'll probably have more information to share then. Okay, all in favor?
Next item.
That...
Oh, Council Peterson?
I'd like to move that council approves Mayor Spence and Council Tully to attend the 2019 SAMMAGM on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, in Regina, Saskatchewan. Cost of this event is $75 per person.
Okay, a seconder to that? Council Phil Chuck, is there any questions there? Okay, all in favor? Good, thank you. Great, next item.
I'll move that council approves the optional contribution toward a travel fund that supports the participation of elected officials from small communities in FCM's National Board of Directors.
That's moved by Council Jones, seconder. Council Beck, is there further discussion there?
Your Worship, what, when we say optional contribution, is there a proposed contribution for that?
Just, just what the, what the statement says, that's the contribution that we would give.
It's, I'm not sure if optional is the correct word, or more of a voluntary contribution towards it, but you, you don't, basically, there's a, a, an established fee for to, to be in FCM, and then there's a couple of optional or voluntary contributions that you can make to either legal or travel or things like that. This is part of that option, that if, it just helps the communities that are on a, on a board for FCM to assist with their travel. So what would our responsibility be for that? I'm just, I'm just, we're supporting them, is there a financial... Yeah, it would be a financial cost of $578. Okay.
Council Beck?
Yeah, certainly, Mayor Spence, I'd like to speak to this. You know, with my role there at SUMA, I'm like, I obviously get to, you know, I do get to see a lot of the FCM contributions, you know, that are, that are certainly resourced back to, you know, to all of Saskatchewan. Obviously, with this year, we do have a number of SUMA reps that sit on there. I know yourself, you sit on the, on the participation board, and, and, you know, certainly, you know, as a community, but also as, as Saskatchewan, you know, definitely see those benefits, you know, translating through with, with supports from, from FCM. So, you know, I'm like, I think it is a, a engagement tool, you know, that we do definitely benefit from, so I do fully support this motion.
And just so that you're aware, that as I am on the board, and SUMA does pay 50% of those costs, that, those costs are paid if we pay the volunteer, a voluntary expense, and if we do not, then SUMA does not pay those expenses. So we pretty well make our money back. Any other questions about that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, next item.
Your Worship, I move that council approves the purchase of a table for eat to the Prairie Sky Chamber of Commerce Fourth Annual Wemexa Awards, being held on March 3rd, 2019, at Northridge Community Center in Martinsville. The cost of a table is $5.75, and individual tickets are $75 per person. You will receive two complimentary tickets as venue sponsors.
So Council Tully moves the motion, and who would like to second that? Council Beck will open the floor to discussion about this. It's probably important to find out how many people are going to be attending to see if it's necessary to buy a table, or, or do we just go with tickets? So do we know tonight how many council members plan to attend this event? Just one?
I'd like to...
Two? Three?
I can't confirm yet, but my preference would be...
Four?
I don't know yet either.
Yeah, it's you to me, so I have to check my calendar.
Okay, well, we'll make the motion, and we'll leave it up to, to, I think it's Aaron, or Dawn, to purchase the table if necessary, otherwise, we would probably just go with tickets. We'll have to do that right away, so whoever is unsure, if you can find out right away what your plans are for that evening.
Does this also include the staff that want to go?
It would be...
Okay, so that, you probably need to know that.
There would be two. Two, it would be Josh and...
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Is there any other questions in my report, moving through? Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving down, we have... Well, we, I see that Karenjeet isn't here, so I think we'll wait till he's here to talk to his report. I mean, we have it, I, should we just...
I can move it here, please.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to move that the mayor's report and the student council representative's written report be accepted as presented for the March 25th, 2019.
Okay, so moved by Council Phil Chuck, seconder, by Council Tully. Any questions of it? All in favor? Okay, council roundtable, starting with Council Beck.
Hey, Mayor Spence. So this past week, I have submitted my newsletter submission for publication in the Clark's Crossing Gazette. I did have a chance to participate in home show here on the weekend, so with my availability, I was only available for, you know, Sunday morning to Sunday afternoon. And, yeah, you know, certainly the feedback that we had, or certainly the feedback that I had heard back from our, you know, from the shared booth, was that that dig over quite well. So, you know, certainly KH developments, you know, certainly had very positive experiments. And we also reported back that they found our staff to be incredibly engaged, and also very knowledgeable, and so, yeah, you know, this year, I think that there was a lot of benefit with them seeing the interaction with our staff, and also that our council had with the, with the attendees to the event. So, you know, very good, you know, feedback on that. And I also had a, I also had a opportunity to speak with some of the firefighters, you know, that were providing service there, so, yeah, you know, like there against Warham certainly, certainly contributes a lot to this particular event, and I think we definitely see dividends from that. So I wanted to pass that along to mayor, council and staff. On March 29th, I will be, um, going with, with our CAO, Bob Smith, to, to visit on behalf of the PRRC, that's the Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee, and we'll be visiting each of the clinics here in Warham, and thank you for, you know, for the doctor's appreciation day. So, yeah, so I definitely have that coming up. And I was very pleased to see that our street sweepers were out, certainly cleaning up like the, you know, the rocks and the sand and whatnot before any of the rains come. So that way there, it certainly keeps, you know, that debris out of our storm sewer. So, yeah, very happy to see that, you know, that little rumble, with this here, like at least I know that the streets are getting cleaned, so that's fantastic. This past week was a very busy week for me. I was off to Regina for SUMA, so we had, we had our, our meeting there. And there's actually a lot of discussion that had come forward, so there's a few things that I'd like to bring forward. Typically, SUMA does a summer school, and we're looking at changing that up and actually holding a municipal forum. This, this basically being a partnership between SARM and SUMA for, you know, for some, for some collaboration discussions. So, right now, our SUMA staff is basically looking at trying to set that up, so the mayor, or let's say the summer school, might be replaced with this particular forum. So, like, there's still a few details to be finally tuned out, but like, we'll see if that there will come forward, so we'll keep council apprised of that. I would also like to announce that October will highlight Women in Politics. So this is a social media campaign, and we're, you know, with this, looking to partner with SARM on that. And, you know, very similar to the, you know, to the funding that we did earlier, you know, that's just one of the things that, you know, that we do see benefits of with, with our participation through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. We did receive a SUMA Advantage update, so that program is, is working very well. Certainly gives communities the opportunity to, you know, to participate, you know, through this particular program, so things there are working quite well. And I would like to announce that I am the Economic Development Chair and whatnot. So I have, you know, from that committee, I'm now as their chairperson. I did manage to, to get a few things passed, some support for the NCTPC. So this is the North Central Transportation Committee. So, you know, this, our representative for Warham on that is Kendall Schramm. And I was able to secure support for the Peyton Ferry, you know, let's say through SUMA, you know, whatever. So we will have a letter coming forth, so I'll, you know, once I do have that, I will get that over to, to Kendall. We are looking to formulate a policy statement on Bill C-69, and we had a few CP rail concerns from some of our smaller municipalities. This year, like, there was a building that went out, you know, certainly in error, and we're looking to educate some of our municipalities to make sure that, you know, we do pay for what we have to pay and not, and not for those errors. So, yeah, so I definitely have that. We also formed a brand-new committee. This is the SUMA Internal Audit and Finance Committee. So I sit on this along with Randy Golden and Roger Haywood. And Roger Haywood is, is the chair of this, and this year, like, will basically be reviewing all of SUMA's finances and whatnot. So that's, you know, certainly a very important committee that, that has been developed. And on a final note, I, I do have one piece of information that will be sent up to council here, probably in the next week or so. This will come as information in camera, and it's basically designed for us to have some conversation around this as, as a council. And from that discussion, our mayor will be, will be bringing that back to the CMC, which is the, like, the city mayor's caucus for, for discussion there. And from that discussion, our mayor will be bringing that back to the CMC, which is the, like, the City Mayor's Caucus, for discussion there. So I can't release details at this particular time, there's a few things that I do have to clarify, and then that will be brought forward. I'll likely discuss with Bob Smith as to how that will work.
You guys are curious now.
Yes, I do, for sure, and that concludes my report.
Does anyone have any questions of Counsel, Counselor Beck?
Do you have the dates for that form that you're looking at for the municipal forum?
We haven't tied down details on that, likely it's going to be August. So we're thinking probably the first part of August, just because if we are going to get SARM on board, later in August is usually a problem for, you know, certainly getting representation from them out.
Counselor Schramm?
How long will the forum be?
I believe that that would be a two-day forum.
Two-day forum, yeah. Because usually mayor or the school was a week or five days, wasn't it?
Nope, oh, this year, that was two days also.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Counselor Jones?
Thank you. Counselor Beck continues the hard act of following. So, I also was at the home style show, so I worked at Booth, and I thought the sharing of the cage developments was a great idea, because together you could tackle just every question that people brought for it. A little slower, I don't know if anyone else worked there noticed that the show certainly was a little bit slower this year. I think which is not, you know, which wouldn't be new to us, just looking at, you know, the recent rates of development. But overall, good show. Going forward, I look forward to this Saturday is our Legends Golf Course Strategic Planning Session, so that's most of the day on Saturday. You know, if any of you guys have any input that have involved with that, you know, with that board, I'm new to it, certainly feel free to draw any line. Other than that, I look forward to reporting back on it, on all that session when we're done.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tully?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess at the risk of sounding a little bit like a broken record, I too was at the home show on, I was there Friday evening. Spent the evening with city manager Smith, as well as our partners at our booth with KH Developments. So I think it was great that we partnered up this year. And had a few good discussions, but also did notice that it did seem like traffic flow was a little bit slower this year in some respects. On Saturday, this is more personal related, but we had the chance to attend the Provincial Cheer Championships in Regina. We were there cheering on the Werman High School Palm Team, and they placed a sixth place in their category, so good job to the girls that were part of the Palm Team. And tomorrow, I'm going to be traveling to Regina to attend the SAMA Urban Advisory Committee, and that's going to be on behalf of our representation through SUMA.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Peterson?
I had the opportunity to attend the budget last week, and that was, I got really taken around showing like kind of how the process works, and that was a really interesting process, so it was good to hear. It's, you think it's just a presentation, but it's very drawn out how they do it, and it's really keen to, I really need to listen to exactly how it comes down to that, so it was really cool to be there for that.
Counselor Schramm?
This past week, I attended the Regional Oversight of P4G. It was in a workshop format this time, and I thought it was very beneficial. And it, our table especially, there was a lot of discussion with the mayor of Saskatoon and the mayor of Martinsville at my table, as well as a counselor from Coleman Park. And, I mean, we didn't have a lot of the answers that everybody else did, but our discussion was very, was really good. I'm not a broken record, I wasn't at the home style show, so I'm sorry about that. I was planning to be away in Cuba, but kind of moved my Cuba dates down. So I will be gone for a week on March 27th to April 3rd. That's my schedule for being away. I won't be, I'll take my phone, but I kind of promised my wife I would be more attentive to her rather than to my phone, so...
Better do that.
I do have a question, though, Your Worship, and that is, I brought to council the funding from SGI, and I think that's coming due here at the end of March, and I haven't heard any reports from planning or what was happening with that. So, Bob, if you have any...
I don't have any update on the report.
Or was it grants?
There's grants available for traffic studies, safety of intersections, et cetera. Maybe Brad can elaborate more on it, but...
We are looking in to see if there's some benefit that we could take advantage of when we're doing our new traffic counts this spring. The timing's a little tight in terms of when we were looking to get that done and when the funding was done. And just while Bob was out of the office, we met with a couple of electrical companies, and this is outside of planning's realm, that's why I wasn't involved in it, because Bob was out of the office, but we were looking at some retrofitting projects that under that program could take advantage of some funding too with some of the energy-saving stuff. But nothing's been concluded yet, like I said, the timelines are a little tight, so I'm not sure. We're waiting on that, and a couple of estimates to come back, and if they come back even on time, then they do bill us, so take advantage of those funds.
And some of the other programs, Recreation already does apply every year toward, just, yeah, I think there's a helmet, safety, and some other things that they...
I just knew that the timeline was coming, was ending here.
Yeah, end of March, actually.
End of March, so I thought I would ask the question. And I think that's all I have, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Philchuk?
Well, I have, coming up, I'm off to the Regional Reconciliation Meeting on Wednesday, and that's actually a full day, day where we're doing some planning, so it's going to be a bit of a strategic planning day too. So looking at our naming, we're looking at what are some of the projects we're going to get into in the next year. So it really is, you know, it's not the school division, it's not our region, it's really beyond that. So it's really been something that's grown beyond. So I think we're becoming leaders in the province in that area, so I appreciate that, and really a chance to take a look back and what we can do moving forward. I know Mayor Spence is joining me with that, and look forward to that day. I was also at the home show, a chance to talk to past councilor Keith Heinrichs for a bit, and Chad Holtz. It's always nice to catch up with them and find out what is happening in the whole area of development and from their perspective. So good chats, and I thank Counselor Beck for covering me at the very beginning, because I was coming in from Calgary in the morning, so it worked out really well. And actually, Sunday was busier than I'm used to, because I usually do work the Sunday, and it was steady from, probably right from 12:30, when I got there, all the way through to 5:00, that, we had people right at the end. We were looking at other booths that were starting to take down, and there's still people coming through. I think Counselor Beck gave me some hints on how to give out a lot of the garb that we had, so it was good. And the other one was the Regional Oversight Meeting, I was sitting with Reeve Harwood, and it was some very fruitful conversations. Laura from the city was facilitating it for us, and we did have the answers, and so, but we had a lot of information, but it was really looking at different perspectives, and we were starting to challenge each other with, you know, what will it look five years from now, 10 years from now, and as Judy said, we were looking at that beyond $750,000, what will it look like 30 years from now? And so should we be holding up ideas, and then what, you know, how can we plan this so we are making a really good footprint there for the future, for that under 750, and then even over 750, up to a million people in the area? So I really enjoyed it too, as Counselor Schramm mentioned, that we got to put ourselves in the planner's shoes a bit, and, but all perspectives to hear from, every one of the partners had a voice at that meeting, and there was different tables with different groups, and we all had to share.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Philchuk. Okay, moving down to correspondence, we have in front of us the Canada Gas Tax Letter, the Werman Business Networking Breakfast, the Province of Saskatchewan 2019 Education Mill Rate Letters. So do we have a motion there to file correspondence?
Your Worship, did you want me to just go through the letters?
We'll start with the motion.
I will move, I'd like to move the correspondence, the gas, Canadian Gas Tax Letter, the Werman Business Networking Breakfast Letter, as well as the Province of Saskatchewan's Educational Mill Rate.
Okay, Counselor Schramm, move that, secondary? Counselor Beck, now open the floor.
No, I was just going to say kind of what's in the letters, so that the public is aware that the one letter from the gas tax is really just our second payment and final payment for the, for our funding that we receive through the Gas Tax Fund. The Werman Business Networking Breakfast is April 11th from 7:30 to 9:00. And then the letter from the province is just the education mill rate, and basically they're advising that the education mill rate will remain the same for 2019 as it was in 2018.
Okay, any further questions or comments there? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Under other reports, do we have a motion there? Counselor Peterson?
A move to accept the Public Works Health and Safety Meeting, the Occupational Health Committee Minutes, and the Library Board Minutes from February 28, 2019, reports as presented.
Counsel Peterson moves, and do we have a secondary? Counselor Schramm will open the floor to questions. Is there any questions in any of those reports? Counselor Philchuk?
The only one for me was the Library Board Minutes. I, there just didn't seem like enough detail with some of the points there. Like, I, as I was going through them, I wasn't sure what the motion was even asking for. So I'm asking for a little bit more expansion for the minutes next time.
Counselor Peterson, can you forward that on?
If I could also add on to that, you know, sort of this year, the, like, the minutes there do express that, you know, that the budget was presented, and we have talked in the past about those reports being included with the minutes, so I'll be looking for, you know, for that information, so I'd...
So do you have that, Counsel Peterson? Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, council approval. Do we have a motion for that?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to motion that council approve the city accounts presented by checks numbered 19448 through 19579 in the amount of $618,333.82. And payroll vouchers numbered 8590 through 8654 in the amount of $86,720.95 to be approved.
Okay, so Counselor Beck moves, do we have a secondary? Counselor Peterson, any questions there? No questions, all in favor? Okay, a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that the March 25th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Council is adjourned.
Secondary? Counselor Tully? All in favor? Good, thank you. Adjourned.